Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Chadaman Land's planning board meeting for December ninth, twenty twenty four. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from our meeting on November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. If there's no comments or discussion or questions, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve minutes?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Judy, second by Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is for Eastside Westside Properties. This is on the agenda for a public hearing regarding the site plan and accessory use permit for children's therapy practice at seventy-one seventy-one East Genesee Street, Fayetteville, tax map number zero eight seven point dash zero seven dash zero five zero. And do we have someone here on behalf of the applicant?
I'm from Grand Rapids, I'm on behalf of the applicant. I believe you have the plans that Greg Scrumo has submitted previously and have our sign his plan. So just to bring everybody up to date, we are seeking accessory use permit and also approval for the sign for children's therapy practice to be located on East Genesee Street in Fayetteville. There's no intention to like substantial changes to the exterior of the building. The applicant will be fixing up the parking area, which he needs it. We talked about that and I think Greg reflected that in his plans. At prior meetings, there was discussion about traffic movement to the site. We've addressed that. Painting some arrow, directional arrows and putting on the left turn sign on the site as well.
A do not enter sign.
A do not enter sign. Yes, yes. You have questions for us?
I just want to make sure. That's what we had on ours, so.
Yeah, so I think that everything that was raised at prior meetings has been addressed in our, in our final plans. We're just here today seeking the approvals.
We need to go through speakers. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments before we go through speaker?
Question slash comment I had was about the lighting and I see that we were given a plan showing photos where the photos were taken. And I'm guessing this is a little bit of a metric plan, but this doesn't really give us any indication of how well the site is being covered by site lighting. But I understand it can be really cumbersome to have fixtures you don't know what they are and the age can affect their efficacy. And so I had an idea that I would like to throw out there and that perhaps our engineer or code enforcement person could go over there at night when they're on and just make sure that everything seems to be good.
Sure.
That would be.
That's right.
Okay. You picked up.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we need to go any further than that, but it would be nice to know.
Yeah, and I think, and like we said, most of the operation is during, I mean, right now it could be operating in the dark during the winter time, so it's still good to check it out, but yeah.
Yeah. Are those lights on currently?
I just, I just go by this evening and there's two fixtures on the, on the home and they're currently off. They're just kind of switched on.
Yeah, it might just be a coordination thing.
Right. I thought it might be convenient your ducts swing by every time.
So, um, do you want to maybe get Lisa when the lights are back on?
We'll do that for sure.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Anything else before we pass through speaker? Anyone else? Okay, so Jamie, Melissa, three speakers.
So we're gonna, um, we do have the short form GAF that everyone has reviewed and we're gonna answer these questions. On the part two. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? The answer is no, or small no, I forgot her. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the layout?
No.
Will the proposed action care the character or quality of existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by vehicle or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and a failed to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No. Will the actually impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action care the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
Will the proposed increase in a potential erosion, flooding or drainage problem?
No.
Uh, will the proposed action create a hazard to the environmental resources or human health?
No.
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 Um, all of these questions, they answered no or small impact. The chairman entertained the motion for a negative seeker declaration for prior.
Okay, motion made by Rich, second by Don, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for a negative seeker declaration. Um, so with that being known, we can move into the public hearing. Lisa, did you publish the notice for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, does anyone want to hear that or should we?
Make the motion, we, we, the reading, the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Judy, second by Erin, to waive the reading for the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries to waive the reading. Now I take the motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Motion made by Erin, second by Arnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is open. This is again for seventy-one seventy-one East Genesee Street, just making sure to put some public hearings on. Um, is there anyone here in the room that would like to speak on this property? Yes, if you still want to come in and contribute? Just let us know who you are and where you live.
Well, my name is James Markon, former owner of their property. I live in Marietta, New York. Um, so I enjoy my trip out here this evening. Um, I want to commend the board from the nineteen ninety days when they opened that street up to residential walk for use. Prior to that, we had to live in their property in order to have an office in it. So I look at it that the other, um, the people, the east side, west side properties are going to do something that the residential multiple use was intended to keep Genesee Street looking like a residence versus area boulevard. Now, one of the things I'm very disappointed is I missed the last meeting and I have forty years of traffic control on that corner, forty years. Now, it's not, you know, it's not the greatest data because not once in my left-hand turns in forty years did I encounter an accident. Okay? I don't understand at all why you're forcing them to put down left-hand turn prohibits, prohibit, prohibition. Because why Dan Chopper? Why not the people on First Avenue? Why not the people, anyone making a left-hand turn? It, it, it makes no sense to me. There should be no restrictions at all. Number two, the, the main address on that, on that house is Genesee Street. It is not Hunt Lane. And all of the, the people, uh, who do deliver, they deliver to the front door, not the back door. The handicap branch is in the back of the house because when you have an eighteen forty's house, you have limitations. Uh, and I look at it that restricting anything, any traffic flow on that house is inhibiting the current owners to do their business appropriately. Uh, so I, I, you know, again, forty years, the problem, I was just, I pointed, the problem for Hunt Lane is Genesee Street. Okay, why did the state convert Genesee Street into it, the three lanes? Because Genesee Street is the problem. Left-hand turns are not the problem. And, you know, I really think that restricting that property to left-hand turns is really unjust and unfair. But other than that, I think that, um, the town of Manlius should embrace east side, west side property. They're going to continue the stewardship of the old Palmer Estate, uh, which that house was part of. And I think that it will be, you know, you know, a continuation of what I, my wife and I tried to do for forty years, believing. They have a handful and we had a handful, so I'm in full support of anything they're doing except the restriction of their parking lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on seventy-one seventy-one East Genesee Street? Lisa, do we have anyone online other than David?
I do not.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Motion made by Rich, second by Arnie, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
Can I just say for the computer's not? Can I ask this question because I, I missed one meeting when the left-hand turn was discussed. I agree with Dr. Monaco. That has had a full access driveway for decades. And I am opposed to restricting that at all because what he had mentioned, if we're gonna restrict that, we might not restrict the whole street. He's in practice, it's not something we can do. I don't believe we approved the site plan yet. So that left-hand turn is not a done deal from this board. It may be at some point. But I, I definitely oppose that because it has impacts to the, the financial viability of that property. And I do not agree with this board restricting that left-hand turn or stating that you can't have left-hand turn to that property.
Well. So it's a, what it is right now on the site plan is not export.
Do not export.
No, so on the plan, it's not enter out of a park. It's one way. They turn in off. Right now. And there's gonna be a do not enter sign preventing them.
See, that, that is.
Inverting on that too.
That's on here because of the discussion that this board had through the act. And I'm totally opposed to that. And I'm, as I say all the time, I'm just one vote, but I don't think we should impact this single property when the whole street has full access, left, right, doesn't matter. Um, but that's just, that's my opinion. It's, it's operated for decades and I know what you're gonna say, the applicant changed it.
No, no, I was gonna say, I'll, I'll talk if anyone else wants to talk, but I was just gonna say that, you know, the traffic on East Genesee Street, maybe there hasn't been a specific accident from a left turn out of that driveway, but the traffic has increased and when properties come before us or site plan changes or meant it is a chance to be able to update based on current conditions, traffic, zoning, et cetera. They can still exit out of the parking lot onto Hunt Drive, out to East Genesee Street, either direction. This is just
What was that meaning?
limiting the traffic out of their driveway to turn left there. They still can turn right into the driveway.
See that?
And, and they can turn, yeah, I mean, it's, they can still go out there and turn left. There's not gonna be a guard or anything.
No, I, I understand, but we shouldn't be restricting because.
I don't think it's gonna impact the business though.
It impacts the valuable land.
No.
I disagree. It impacts the valuable land.
Do you want me to explain how all this works and why or should we save it for another time?
Well, this is part of this discussion because we're gonna decide.
Yeah. So if this were to be designed right now with the road Route Five, with the speeds and the volume and every rate that it currently has, you'd allow back curbs if there were access to Hunt Road. Is it Road?
What you're, what you're saying, go to Hunt Lane or Hunt Drive lane and turn left around the Genesee Street.
One of the reasons why this is important is because when you have a road with the classification and the busyness of Route Five, when you have a lot of individual curb cuts all trying to have business hours and make lefts and turns and all of that, it becomes very dangerous to make a left turn out of there. I have visited many businesses along the way and have made left turns out of them and you have to wait one last time to get out. But this is an opportunity to have a project coming for us and I suppose forty years ago, the traffic wasn't as bad as it is now. And I didn't say they had to do it. I made a suggestion. As a professional who understands these things, that this is a safe, this is a safe decision to make when they drive. The other thing is that it's the property next to the road, to the Hunt Road. If it were in the middle of a block and it didn't have any other access to a traditional intersection to get access to Route Five, then it wouldn't even be discussed because that would be their primary access. But we're not taking it away. It doesn't affect their mailing address or receiving packages or deliveries or anything like that. People can still turn in from either direction, but it can help in a very simple way to prevent and be a total conflict on the path. Now, I am just one voice. I am just one landscape architect. We have a planner here. I believe you're a background. Don is in planning. I don't know if you have an opinion on it as well, but, um.
My language is somewhat different. The volume of the road, I think about what I call marginal interference, is the extent that creates distractions or opportunities for problems. I recognize from one speaker in public hearing that he had no sense of accidents for forty years. But the idea that there's a public road immediately adjacent to the property makes it clear this thing from all these properties is only a driveway. Or of course they had the right to get out on the Route Five. And in a comment earlier on in this project before, somebody said they were required to have the driveway out to Hunt in the neighborhood or not to have the driveway to Route Five because they didn't want the traffic going on to Hunt Drive. And that comment was made at an earlier meeting, but I'm not sure of context, so. I remember hearing it, that the framework for that and whether that's a, a piece of unsubstantiated commentary without any historical basis, I do not know. But the, the pace of traffic, a reduction of marginal interference and there are more than viable options sees to be, this day and age, a rational way to look at traffic. And so limiting heat res from that driveway, I don't think it materially affects that property. You have ingress and if that's what active trucks want to do, they can come into driveway, do their drop offs and then more to do than just fill a loop on the Hunt Drive and get out with much more space orbit up to the light, which is down and out to the planet on the way. So yes, in the context of what works well and you have a lot, high-volume road with limited slight distance, living stopping distances. A particular road is two ways with no dividing barrier. It's really a changed design in this day and age. Anything that I think achieves somewhat less marginal interference is without a material effect on the applicant, I think it's a good policy.
We all have things to do.
I don't have votes.
I, yeah, yeah. I, I just. This property has had a full access driveway for decades. And I'm not one that wants to vote to take somebody's property rights away from them. You can come up with all the reasons why we should, but I'm not gonna do it. I, I just, I think that's wrong for this board to get involved in that type of thing. And I, I know it was a suggestion that I think they accepted or agreed to or I wasn't at that meeting on a cloud that I spread. But I, I will not vote for something that takes somebody's property rights away. Just won't.
Does anyone, any other board members have a comment, David or?
I was just gonna say that there's been situations where I've been in where I might have to turn left and I'll turn right just to avoid turning left to go, you know. But I would, I agree with Rich. I think for forty years you've had no issues on that property. And let, let people make a decision whether you're gonna turn left or right, it'll still be that open to the property.
Arnie or David, anything to add?
I'm ready to vote.
I agree with Rich, but I'm ready to vote.
All right, um, yeah, we can present it. Yeah, um, so this is just for site plan, not for accessory permit just yet. Um, but would someone like to make a motion to approve the site plan?
Am I missing something? I'm gonna ask a question. I don't see anything under marked. Any kind of signage on that driveway. Am I missing something?
Right there, there's an actual.
I can't really see that sign.
Yeah, but you don't.
There is no limiting.
Oh, oh, so what they're saying is.
You can't go out that way.
You can't go out there.
Right.
Okay. And this was given to us by the applicant.
So I would make a motion to approve the site plan as presented. I'll make that one.
Sorry.
Second by Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've got two, three, four opposed. Four, four, four. David, were you opposed or for the motion?
I'm opposed.
Okay, we have four opposed.
And my, my pose is that I want them to still have full access driveway when it's done. And I understand this is what they gave us. This is what we voted on.
You people are making another motion.
You're making another motion.
To approve, I mean, other than that one thing, the site plan is fine to me. So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan if it's modica, modified, that they still have full access to the driveway on the Genesee Street.
I'll second that.
So that would mean without the do not enter sign, if they're actually there.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so a motion made by Rich to approve the site plan without the directional sign and the do not enter sign to not restrict traffic on the driveway is made by Rich, second by Arnie. All in favor on that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, I would still vote yes because I don't think it's a huge deal. It was intended as an extra level of safety, so I don't disapprove with the rest. I mean, I don't disapprove of the site plan period. And taking that out doesn't change my, I mean, I would still vote yes on the site plan without that. So can I use I again?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I'm, I mean, if that's the way the board's going, I don't want to be that. I'm not voting no other site plan.
Right.
Yeah. So I for me. Don.
I don't have a word.
Yes. Yeah, so the motion, all right, so let's just make sure the motion carries unanimously for the site plan without the directional sign and the do not enter sign, any restriction of traffic on the driveway. Okay. All right, we will go on to accessory use permit. She, Melissa, in the time period.
Does it, does an accessory use, you know, go with the land?
It goes with this use.
It goes with it, which is.
So the, the criterion is, is this use compatible with this?
That property.
This property. And if the answer is an affirmative, then it can be a vote.
Oh, and I just want to note while you're giving that.
Yep.
Then the sign was also part of that, just so everybody.
Which looks, I think that's fine.
Yeah. Only just to not confuse ourselves because we've got some on here that don't, that don't have that. So, so to make sure.
So to approve the accessory use permit, since we know the use, we know the property.
Yes. What we're. So you're, you're approving the accessory use of what it is, what it is.
The use of children's therapy.
Children's therapy.
Yes.
I, I'll make the motion to approve the accessory use permit for that use on that property.
I'll second. Can we do that or make the?
No, well, that's fine. It's just, it is the, um, you know, we just, we looked at the environmental impacts, the aesthetic impacts, the safety impacts. And the traffic.
Yes.
And we did seek it.
And we did.
Okay. Jamie's all over that, or the motion made by Rich.
But those were the criteria, right?
Yeah.
To, to really, first one to one fifty-five, there's plenty of that.
And that'll be the case for. Okay. All right, uh, motion made by Rich for accessory use permit approval selected by Arnie, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for accessory use permit approval as well. So. That is it? Thank you. You're all set. Thank you. Except, yeah, we'll check on the lighting.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody come and get me when you're done.
Oh, right, right. I was, yeah. Okay. All right, while we have Greg here, the next item on the agenda is for Danielle Ryan Edwards. Um, this is at eighty-two ninety-one East Santa Cruz Pike, Manlius. Um, this is for special divisions, site plan and special use permit for faucet dog daycare, tax map number zero nine nine point dash zero one dash twenty-seven point four. So Greg, you're here. And if you wanna tell us about the latest.
Yeah, we, after our last meeting, which was, I think, very helpful in us, uh, getting a handle on, uh, both of course the board and what limitations the, the board would have as far as what we could on the site. My back strong board, uh, we often sided with the, with the owners and with the architects. Uh, and came up with us, changes to the site which, uh, unfortunately will get a long way to, will be needed to get approval. The, uh, we did go through about a forty thousand square foot millimetre size uh, that's required by the code. Uh, we tried to eliminate as many bearings as possible. The one, uh, variance that we will need is for this building here, which is approximately, I'm gonna say about four feet across the setback line, the existing building.
Will it work if we, Ernest, will the, will it stay in there?
Like this?
Yeah. Sorry.
I'm gonna say in your better perspective, absolutely.
Yeah.
So this building here, the brown buildings are existing. And, um, and the orange building are the two proposed buildings. This is essentially the same building that was, uh, previously planned for, for doggy daycare. The building now will be, uh, built adjacent to the existing, uh, building utilized by lawn care business. And that'll just become extra indoor running and place space for dogs, especially during a wet, uh, weather, cold weather like, like this time of year. That those have more indoor space. It was kind of an extra expense. They weren't ready to, uh, they come at this point, but it makes sense with the lot layout that it is today. Um, and then this building here will be replaced by this building here, which is tucked away in a corner here, uh, within the setback lines. So it's not a problem. Like I said, this one here, um, is the only building that we can't move. This building here will be moved to here. And this building will be moved to here. But that'll get rid of those, uh, accroches on setback lines. And this one here, it's an apartment foundation, um, is gonna end up being about four feet into setback. We moved the parking, uh, along the, uh, the side here. Um, we've had some landscaping in this area for the entrance. We will eliminate this driveway connection that currently exists, um, when a new driveway goes in. And the, uh, the hatch there to here is gravel area that will be removed, uh, that's existing today. Um, and, uh, the top station is shown, uh, with a, a force main going out approximately where it will be connected. We're waiting for some drawings from New York State DOT, uh, rough the exact layout of the sewer, standards sewer out the road.
Is that directional drum?
Yes.
Most likely they would be, uh, yeah, I don't think, uh, they, it will, it will be, it's a level of something.
Greg, um, so I just wanted to clarify, confirm that the existing garage, the brown building behind the tunnel, the whole tunnel building, will not be used for any landscaping.
Correct. Correct.
And then the one that cannot be moved will also not be used for any.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So. You shouldn't don't want to move that and save yourselves a trip to the CBA.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's. Or has, uh, uh, footers, the other ones are actual sheds that can be relocated easily. That one there.
But if they can't, I mean, maybe this is a question. They can't use it for the landscape stuff, are they gonna, that use gonna be replicated in the new building or is it just gonna be empty? Or are they gonna?
He's got, he's got plenty of room in this building here.
I'm just curious why it's staying if they can't use it for what they are using it for now. Is it just more expensive to move it?
They can't, it really, it'd be more expensive to move it.
If you had to move it, you'd have to build it on. Yeah, I mean, we kind of thought that when I saw it, that maybe it could be a nice indoor.
I mean, I'm sure what want to use for, or what, you know, that's supposed to be used for, but just as, right now, we're just trying to do the less expensive route, because there are the other expenses we didn't think we were gonna have to do with, in the back, you know, building another structure or so.
Okay, so, so you would still need a rear setback.
Side.
Just this one.
So this, isn't that one?
We're just doing the rear as well.
In the fence area, there's already existing fence in this location, eight foot high wood fence, and that would be, uh, extended, uh, or, or basically closed in.
That was a question I had. I didn't know how far the existing fence went, and when you pointed to the, um, south property line, itself, southwest property line, same quote, I didn't know, it didn't go that far, or our drawing is different, maybe.
I, it's, it's been turned around. The intent is that, I, I think it goes to about where it is right here. The original plan, we were gonna add a couple sections to it, but it wasn't much. So wherever it ends here, is the intent towards the end, because we've got, we've got enough space, and we'd rather have it towards the back here.
So is the existing one on that side eight foot? One that just got her up?
Yes.
Is eight foot necessary to keep the dogs from jumping on it? No, it's more for privacy from our neighbors.
And it also, you know, keeps down things like noise and that sort of thing. So I mean, if we, you know, if you wanted an other one to be six foot, we could do that, uh, that would certainly support. I think, I think it looks like.
Because I'm assuming, uh, positive feedback taken, there will be another submission, whether called SAG.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just trying, we're.
And you put the details and the fence in on that.
Yeah, so we'll, 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 you know. We'll check things like that. We'll give you some more details, so. I think there might be some, but they're working out of anyways. I don't think it was done yet, but the paving, the parking, the ADA.
Yeah, before you come, before you, you have those, I did get a call from our codes enforcement officer today on the plan, he might check in with him top waitress on fire access. He was talking about, I think, for, and I don't know, Doug, you might be able to comment, but he had some concerns about the fire access with the. I'm not really sure at this point. With the driveway going, the connecting, he's going away and then getting that the furthest back building, but just checking with him, is there any final? Terms?
Any further needs, there's gonna be function of the building, how the building is designed, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, coming.
No, if they're concerned about turning around back there, there's probably, uh, there's probably a lot more space back there, most places.
I think that.
Yeah.
The fire truck's not gonna make that turn through that thing you're pulling out, the connecting thing you're pulling out anyway, they wouldn't be able to make that.
I don't think, I would hate to see it try to do that.
So I had a question about whether there would need to be an access agreement.
Yes.
For that to get through here. Um, and then, would you be having overnight, I don't know why I didn't think to ask this before.
No.
We had a kennel before us a while back.
No, it's a dog day, it's a dog daycare.
I thought so, because it says kennel and I.
I don't know why people kept saying that, we don't.
Um, would, I think, first of all, this looks great. Um, I know it took some time to get here, but, and I can't speak for all the requirements of our code, but I believe this needs, gets it done, right?
Well, just the variances.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and then.
And if we can have a positive recommendation, if you're inclined to recommend positively on the variance, we can get that process going, and then in the meantime, we'll get more details and stuff too.
So just a couple of things to think about. You might consider if screening, and obviously your business being what it is, you could do it, but I look at this as if these were two different parcels owned by two different people, rather than what's current, you know, that you own both. But if you might want to think about whether you want to have some screening on that parking lot heading towards the residence, because the headlights coming in. Um, you know, early in the morning for drop offs or in the evenings for pickups. Um, it could be disorienting for people who are picking up their kids from daycare park.
There is like a, that's already there.
Instead of coming out.
We can move, I was gonna, that's.
So just something to think about, um, and then signage.
The paving goes, so we gotta move it like ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, just something to think about, if you want to show that on the drawings, if we were gonna do it now, um, signage. You know, we had talked about that a while back for the daycare, the doggy daycare for, and lighting, obviously. I mean, I'm just naming off a few things that are on our site plan checklist. Um. Why the second setback in the wayback? There's a second setback line.
So.
Near the barn.
Well, so this becomes a property line, this will end up being, I would imagine, a side yard, side yard.
It's the return, the return that comes through.
You know, I, I think that's because it keeps, something keeps getting left on from, you know, different plans.
But I saw that.
I just saw that, I'm like, it's too setback, yeah, they need to stop here.
Yeah, well, I didn't know if that was influencing your placement of the building.
No, what's influencing it is that, is that there's, uh, existing gravel.
Yep.
In this location, and he's gonna have access here, so instead of adding more gravel, there is actually gravel back in here. It was shown kind of funny on this, on the survey, but when we walked out back in there, it is kind of like a loop area here, so it might get a little bit of extra gravel, but not much. But just to get, deal and get this trailer around and through there is a main thing. So it, it really was, uh, you know, leave as much of this alone for circulation and then kind of just, uh, get enough there to get to the building.
Well, you don't, how close are, you don't want to get too close on disturbance, some acre.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty minor, it's actually, you know.
That's half of it.
Yeah, and then this will be a different parcel. Really, it's that parcel there. And, and, and if you take this, if you take this from scale and you do this, here's one acre.
Right.
We're not, we're not.
No, I didn't think so.
I'm so scared.
I wouldn't.
The whole, the whole difference on the work.
I know. Grading, I assume it's gonna pretty much meet existing.
Yeah, it'll be a little bit of grading, but, um, I've gotta get the finished floor elevation of that there, it's gonna be the same elevation. Um, a lot of this is already gravel, so we're just gonna keep that. Um, so the, the grading's gonna change minimally.
Right.
Uh, even the driveways, you know, I gotta make sure it's.
Everything's pretty wet right now, so if there was gonna be a problem, you know.
Yeah.
Could just grade the pounding, there could be pounding up here without an issue, if you had to. Um, so the que- I have just kind of a question. One or one point zero zero plus or minus acres, forty-two thousand two hundred fifty-seven plus or minus acres. It's the same thing on both parcels. Why don't you have it, why do you have plus and minus on there? And with the one isn't forty-two thousand one acre. Why don't you have this specific acreage, instead of saying plus or minus on both of them?
Well.
What are we?
Yeah, I was a little, yeah, that was a little tweak, and you know.
Yeah, it will be, it will be forty thousand. He had a forty-two, and then that, and I realized that it's only required to be forty. Uh, so I just left it forty, you know, because it just affects a few of the little things in the back there, like this, you know, where that shed goes. So it, it'll be forty thousand.
I would just reconcile them, so it's all.
So it is gonna be forty, so will the, what's the, will the line change?
No, no, the line, the line should, it should not change.
One point six point. You might just update the table and take off the plus or minus, that kind of thing.
We're trying to use the plus or minus.
It's on the plan itself, in the lower left-hand corner by the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's, that's wrong.
I know, I was like.
I apologize, that is wrong, it would be forty thousand.
Whichever it is, either.
Well, he had it, he had it at forty-two thousand, it's only, it'd be one acre.
Yeah.
And then we realized it only needed forty, so it's just a tough point a little bit.
It's, how, it's like a thousand off, not a big deal. And then the same thing back here, you know, I assume you know exactly what it is.
The surveyor.
Yes. Um, that was just kind of a.
Yeah, we gotta look at this, we gotta look at the overall survey map, but you know, at that point in time, you know, we'll have the surveyor, uh, give you the subdivision map. Sort of reflects properties there. I didn't go again.
So other than pulling it up to the current, um, site plan requirements, thinking if you want any screening, it would require it to be on the drawing, I mean, if you did plantings and things later on.
Screen them here, we'll look around here.
Well, it's, that doesn't have to be, um, because.
Yeah, I take it, I definitely, yeah, we definitely like that idea, that's why we have like the presence there now, so if we have to move it, we'll definitely like move it, just so there is, there is some like, you know, blockage there.
Kids from them. Yeah, or the dogs, the dogs.
What dogs?
Well, when they come in and out of the building, keep them from taking off in that direction too.
I'm mine, but vision, mine as well. The average dog.
Hopefully they're tired, I mean, they don't want to.
That's a good point. I love the idea of reusing the giraffe that's there for indoor space for the dogs and stuff, I think that that's gonna be a lot of fun.
Yeah, they, I mean, they were always kind of hoping to do something, I just didn't want to do it right off the bat, but.
That was, that was our, our plan eventually, like a couple years down the road, just to like get it started and going, so we would like, you know, not be selling, and that.
Well, code sometimes can throw a wrench in this, I guess. That's all that's actually I have, thank you.
Come on, just, that's really nice, your site plan, just living in some of the information, this is detailed for us, I don't understand it. Says proposed one quarter inch force me.
One quarter.
Oh, one and a quarter.
Could be.
Okay.
No, it says one quarter.
Say one quarter.
I saw that, I don't know about.
Yeah, one, one.
Maybe they dried it up real fast.
That helps.
Uh, Greg.
Like an Asian girl.
The relocated shed that's going on to the landscaping property, just a thought, it's not a, not a skill breaker or anything. Um, if you moved it where the other sheds are, just for traffic flow for the business, just a thought.
You mean for these? This is for the daycare.
Right, the one that's being moved on to the landscape, that one relocating up ahead, yeah.
Yeah, it's going in here.
Right, I just wondered, just because of the driveway pump, back through there?
Oh, should we move it somewhere else?
Just a thought, it's only a thought.
Let me, let, let me take a look at that, maybe we move it, just out like.
Yeah, just because then it's not like.
Yeah, yeah, I see you're saying something.
So, so I think there's a lot going on here, and I think Greg did it that way. So then you could show us what the.
Definitely go anywhere.
Yeah.
We'll, 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 we'll.
Just for blow of your trucks everywhere, that was a lot, not a.
I was just telling the group, I think there's a lot going on here, and it was great for a concept to show what's going on here. So I think you're probably at a point where you should develop a site plan.
Also, the.
With, with like, you know, landscaped, um, table, that checklist, parking table, I don't need a checklist.
It's listed somewhere.
I don't need a checklist, but other things that this group has looked at in the past is, um, elevations of the proposed building.
Well, you brought us.
We got, we got.
So you kind of explained it a little bit, and then I was just talking to Jamie, then you want to include now the garage building, so we can see what that would.
Yep, and how landscaping ties in around the foundation, twenty things, that kind of stuff, right? Yeah, I think that was good, just show the concept of work.
Exactly, it was, yeah, so I mean, we're getting, we're going, seems like we're getting.
Yeah, so if the.
Five stairs, so.
So if the, sorry, oh, no, I was just gonna say, if the garage and the shed are staying, I was just gonna see what the board felt about, um, CBA recommendation. It would need a rear setback variance of twenty feet and a sided variance of four feet.
So the only thing is, I, what is the next CBA submission date?
We're trying to get some, uh, go back some time personally, because they have.
I, yeah, so it's, oh, did you, sorry.
Uh, I believe it's December twenty-sixth, or January.
Okay. Yeah. You don't have a meeting? Before.
Are they, are they open on the twenty-sixth?
No, no, that's the deadline.
I'll give you the deadline, it's just a CBA, okay, yeah. And the one on our January meeting, when's their January meeting, um, it would be one, two, three, the sixteenth. Okay, and we have a meeting at thirteen.
Mm-hmm, correct. So we can, so you need to make that rec, make that application. The CBA, and then we'll do a recommendation at one of these meetings, and maybe you'll have more, um, complete site plans at that time as well for further discussion. Obviously, can't do any, uh, really not a complete application. And so, uh, uh, CBA. Assistant systems.
Same, I guess, the, put the application for CPA. And, uh, and then we need to come back.
Um.
Or not.
Yeah, develop your plans, you know, I mean, if nothing else is ready, we can still do that recommendation.
Yeah, we gotta say, we're very, we're very.
Yeah, yeah. We can do the recommendation on a thirteen.
Okay.
Because I'm just throwing the.
I can change a few minor things.
Our deadline for the thirteenth is the second, January second, at noon, and I don't know if you have everything for the holidays, so that's up to you guys.
Yeah, but you want to do that now?
Well, we don't have an application, so you don't have anything to.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get.
For CBA?
Yeah, they didn't do their application yet.
Right, but if we send a positive to them, if we send the CBA, I can send them the agenda of the application tomorrow, that may.
Well, we'll do it, it's better to have the applications, we know exactly what we're recommended on.
Oh, yeah.
And then they'll be here anyway.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to avoid doing a recommendation until they've actually applied for it.
Exactly.
And then we know, but, you know.
Better signal and sorry, yeah, yeah, it's a better, uh, practice, yeah. Because it's just the four and a half foot side yard for that one, for existing building, right?
And they have twenty foot rear.
So.
All part of the recommendation, you definitely need to make comments on to make your application, okay?
We don't have to show all.
That's for the recommendation.
I think I'm out of time.
Not unless you change anything real crazy.
Right.
No, we're not getting crazy.
I think we're, I mean, I think it's looking like they'll get a project.
Yeah, looking for a decent. We can, we can do that, we'll get to the application.
Yeah.
Uh, but I get here Wednesday, you guys all.
Yeah, and then we'll have another meeting in January if you want to come with.
Send that, but then we might, we might have a much more refined package for it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all your.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is for Pep Road Solar, um, I don't have the address in front of me for the text number, but they're looking to extend their permit, the, for the time for getting a building permit.
Correct, is anyone, is anyone here for that?
Is anyone here, I'm supposed to be online, but I don't see her, so.
What, when does their date run out?
Um, it, it's by November twenty-sixth, I think, is what's.
So if, if she's not on, I, 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 there are two things that were, that came up from the town attorney. Um, one is that, um, the decommissioning agreement is still not resolved. So this might be a time to say, we're not gonna extend the building permit unless the decommissioning agreement is done.
Yeah.
Uh, there's only eighty-five dollars and fifty cents left in the escrow, so, you know, the. Uh, there's only eighty-five dollars and fifty cents left in the escrow, so, you know, the town keeps negotiating with the commissioning, there's more fees owed, um. There, and it, there was a continuing question apparently about who's gonna be responsible. Um, for maintaining the decommissioning permit, and that's not been forthcoming either, so, um, I don't. You know, I, we can send them, um. You know, I'll, I'll have the town attorney send them an email, or I can, or, you know, let them know that those are issues. That need to be resolved. Before we would extend.
When is your current permission?
It's expired three months ago.
It's expired eighteen.
You're going to do it.
It was more eighteen months, a little over eighteen months ago. So did I read somewhere, I was trying to read back through stuff, because I thought this was for the specialty permit, and it's not, it's the building permit?
Well, it's, it's the condition of the special permit is the time within which to get the building permit.
Okay, it was May of twenty three. And I've read somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong. Specialty permit for solar like this is fifteen years. This one was, yes, and then somewhere else I read that, um, they have to do, um. Compaction testing. To know where they have to return it to. For decompaction. They have to do that now.
Do you, do you want?
They have to do.
Oh, the decommissioning?
No, they have to go out, I took, finally, they have to go out and do, um, testing.
I think that, I think that was correct, I think this site had a road. That moved in and around.
A road, yeah, it was made very clear that it's just an assigned access way, not a road with gravel, they were very clear, it was in, it might have been in their comment letter back in winter or something.
So what's the question?
There, would that, wouldn't that have to be done as well?
But I, I don't under, understand the question.
Wouldn't that have to be done as part of the requirements?
That would be part of the decommissioning.
It's the decommission.
Then it needs to come back to the original.
Compaction.
The original law.
They would have to do that before construction, so would that happen? As part of, I don't know when that has to happen, but it has to happen before they do anything out there, it's just a machine, they just use a, they're not speak.
I don't even know if they would go that far with it, if I recall from memory, there was like one location where they had a, a parking area. And the parking area had to be taken back, and the public was here, and the public, right, one of the people from the public was a land state architect, and she wanted to make sure that was put in there.
Is this the one that was gonna post the ban as opposed to cash for decommissioning, does anybody remember that?
I, I don't recall, Rich, but this is.
Well, the decommissioning.
One off that road that we went back and forth.
The decommissioning is, is still under, like, the town attorney's, and the town board's gonna decide that, so. I, I can't see after eighteen months or how long, if they have a decommission plan, why would, we're gonna extend it.
Now, again, we don't know how long they want the extension for.
Right, we were gonna ask that, so we've got a couple of questions, and they've gotta do a couple of things, so I, we wouldn't be approving any extensions tonight.
There's no one, there's no one here to address your concerns.
Well, no, but I think we can have Jamie in with them.
Valerie, what's the substance of it, my personal feeling is that. You had a permit, you had a set of conditions, you didn't meet them, you're done, that's it.
I agree.
Done.
Wow.
Yes. No, I started, you know, why the hell are you talking about this now? They haven't done a thing, there's no shovel on the ground, they have, they're still negotiating that. I know mine. It's financing.
It's money.
Sure. You gotta borrow a trillion dollars in order to.
It always hold.
Sure.
I, 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 I feel like it's, I think it's worth looking into it with legal. Check in person.
Yeah, Barbie say. But hard enough. That's not. I think.
If it expires, then six months later they come in and want a permit, but it's out of hill, the plan is not possible, or do you think there's a change of public opinion, it would never happen?
I think. I think we come to start over.
That's what kind of are saying.
Start from scratch.
Yeah.
Does that basically means they resubmit with the stuff that was already approved, right? They could.
I, I guess they could, but it's still our decision then to decide whether or not we want to approve it two years later, I mean, I, I don't know what.
I see, we give them one more, one more chance with this information.
Well, the, yeah.
And then. We make a decision.
The permit, it has expired, I can remember.
Just the building permit as time.
And we've had this discussion on normal projects in the past. Yeah, right?
Yeah.
And we, we have terminated the projects.
Yeah.
Because they just keep bragging on and on and on and on, and forget about it.
Usually, usually they get at least one extension, but, um. So, you know, unless something, if something changed significantly, we are now. We're oversaturated, like, hey, we lost a chance, go away, someone else gets a chance.
So that's my question, they, there's a limit, our. Yeah, there's some limitations. And they can only be within a mile of each other, and all this kind of stuff, so if somebody else came back in the meantime.
Yeah.
And wanted to do something, and it was approved and all of that, then it could prevent this from happening.
Correct, we've also waived that.
Yeah, we waived those actually.
Depending on the project.
Yeah.
The impact.
The planning board has a right to waive the one mile.
Yeah.
Every month.
I'd say we give them a chance for one extension.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, not right now, not that.
We need to get more information. Well, we need to get more information with the potential to.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Sorry, okay, we need to vote on that, or? Um, we're just going to adjourn it, okay?
Can we ask for this more information, is that a formal communication?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sending, actually, I'm taking this, I'm attorney right now.
Just out of interest, to, would you summarize what we're gonna ask of them?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask them what the problem is with the decommission plan, and why they haven't agreed to it, and why we shouldn't yet give them building permit, uh, extension, or any kind of extension until they do with the. Uh, special use permit with the, uh, decommissioning plan, uh, that's, that's kind of good.
I think, I think that plan should have Eric's comment.
I found it, so.
Cause that's a pretty subtle thing that we.
It was added later, it was added on the twenty eighth of last of twenty twenty-three, revisions for planning board review, um, bubble note C. Contractor shall submit soil penetrometer readings of the permeable hollow access road and a map of the reading locations. Or for, prior to the release of funds for any restoration paint items to ensure pre-development soil conditions have been maintained, C notes six and seven. For road location, so what that tells me is they would have to go back, they would have to go in there and do that prior construction. And they should provide that, I don't know if that becomes part of the, um, restoration approval package, but we, so we do or do not know if they have done that. I don't know.
I'm not aware of that.
I, I wouldn't think they would.
And then, and what if, what's the reference?
C, bubble note C. Done, I mean, I put done as in the triangle, I don't know what, they didn't, but it's.
That would be, that would be.
What's the.
I'm gonna say relating to. Relating to soil penetration.
Penetrum, no, it's soil compaction.
That, that was, that was because the nature came by and they.
Okay, yeah, um.
It was a runoff.
Correct.
What was the date on that?
The revision date on the drawing is March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. And it's shown on several different drawings.
Set up. And what about the fees?
Yeah, and, uh, same thing, so there are some outstanding fees as well.
When, when we talked about bonds, and I'm not sure if this project, we're looking at bonds or cash, we always wanted cash. Then some of the later projects said, we want to do bonds. Bonds typically last one year and need to be renewed, and I'm, I'm saying this just because I had some comments two years ago or something. Just to let you know my thoughts on it. Um, and I wanted to insert into the decommissioning plan if they were going to use a bond. Which I'm opposed to, if they're gonna use a bond, I was also told none of my business is between the town board and the applicant. But I wanted to put some language in it that said, ninety days prior to the termination of the bond, they have to give us proof it's been renewed. If they don't, within thirty days, they need to, no, they need to decom. The project at that one time, if they don't do it within thirty days, we go and do it, and then go after the bond. And the reason I, I wanted to do that is to make sure we got our money back before the bond expired. And. It clearly came back that it's got nothing to do with planning board or me, and whether or not they do it, they'll do it, but we need to make sure, we meaning the town. Through the town board, has to make sure we either have the cash or the bond to decommission it whenever that happens, and I'm, I'm concerned about that.
So, two questions, one, who's responsible for taking care of reminding people ninety days before the bond is due?
It would be the town, because that agreement that I tried to add some.
I remember that, yeah.
Is between the town and the applicant.
So somebody has to make sure that that gets done.
It gets calendared, so that they send a letter and say, can you please provide us with proof the bond's renewed?
Okay, my other question is, if it's cash, it goes into some sort of a bank account that the town manages, and gets the interest?
Uh, it's, the towns are very limited in what they can do with their money, but it's probably at this point in a CD.
Doesn't that bring higher return?
Well, I, you could put.
I'm just curious, because, and how much of the bond is it we're talking about, is it percentage of construction?
It depends, there's an engineer's estimate on the project, and we say, write us a check for whatever. And hopefully it gains some interest, and there's enough money there when, when it gets decommissioned and. But with a bond, it's a lot different, because we don't have control about the applicant's. And if they don't break the premium, it goes away.
And nobody knows.
And then there's nothing.
But isn't the bond in our name? In the town's name?
Well, it might be in the town's name, but what if you don't make the premium, goes away?
No, but, I mean, it, it, oh, they haven't prepaid for the bond for the whole year?
Well, even if it's, even if they prepaid for one year, we're talking about twenty-five years from now. So we want to make sure twenty-five years from now, there is a bond in place, or we have cash, to decommission it if they don't. And the only way to do that.
I understand, but shouldn't the bond be tied to the time limit that we give them on their permit to do what they need to do?
Yes, but the problem is most bonding companies, insurance companies, only provide a one-year bond. Now, we had somebody before us that said, oh, no, we can get five years, okay, you can get five years. But the language that I wanted to put in that is prior to the expiration, no matter what the term is, ninety days prior, you give us that you renewed that bond. If you don't, decommission it, it's within thirty days, if you don't, we'll do it and go after the bond, because if it goes beyond the one year, or whatever the term might be, there's no bond.
I understand, what I'm suggesting, cause I agree with you one hundred percent, what I'm suggesting is, why don't we tie our permit time limit to end when the bond ends? And then it becomes their responsibility, if they want to continue, to give us the money. Or come back for a renewal.
We have done a few of these projects, and the special use permit's been fifteen years. And they have asked, the, the, the applicants have asked for that because of financing.
Okay, so this is beyond our discussion, this.
I know, but I want, I want to just point that out, that we could be, we could be in trouble when these things decommission.
Yeah, so that's, that's definitely a discussion to have, it's a fight with a different group.
Valerie.
Um.
Just another, from a finance point of view, these folks have options, a very large piece of land in the town, and at very low cost. For an indefinite period of time. If, uh, somebody came along and wanted to build a factory, where that solar farm was supposed to go, and said, here's ten million dollars, we'd like to build it tomorrow. We shouldn't have to sit here and say to these guys who've optioned the land for the solar farm, well, we'll keep talking to you for the next ten years until you finally come up with the money to start it. I think we should cut them off and say, look, you had a deal, this is what we gave you, your time is up, you're done. Now, I'll defer to you and the lawyers in the town, and all the experts in this field, but I don't like the idea of a, an option on a piece of land, very big piece of land. With no future, we have, what, what are you getting for it? What's the town getting out of it?
We were gonna, we weren't prepared, we were gonna ask, at the start was gonna ask. What length of extension they needed, so I think that passes a limit to it, we're looking for a few months, that's one thing. They need a lot longer, and that's a different situation, so.
I, I agree with Valerie.
I know, but I still think we need to.
Do you trust them?
Yes, they haven't done it yet, and I.
Another question here, what if the person who owns this land now? Like.
Why is he here?
What do they think? Right?
I can't remember, I don't even remember.
Right, are they, have they been.
I can't, I mean, I remember the one.
Oh. So I wonder if it was getting paid, the owner of the land, maybe getting paid all this time.
He might be getting a more reaction, maybe or something.
I thought we had moved on, that we were going to have Jamie's eagle send something, and then we're coming back to see, waiting to see what we hear back, and putting that, um, we're adjourned and tabling it to another meeting.
Could we?
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item.
And then letter that Jamie's gonna send, could we please have in it, if you don't respond within fifteen days, thirty days, twenty days, the planning board's gonna.
Yeah.
Jeff, you're renewing.
Well, my, my idea is that we're gonna send a note saying, there's some things that we're concerned about, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Sorry, it's fire.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, I've got on the agenda. Um, is for, uh, John Graves, uh, this is for a public hearing, uh, for a public hearing for two lot subdivision and lot line adjustments. Um, for sixty-nine forty shoves per row, East Syracuse River, X map number zero four one point dash zero one dash zero eight point one. And zero four one point dash zero one dash zero seven point zero. Um, so, it's here, and I know my first. Question was gonna be the dot this week here.
What kind is that? I think so, but I do have the answer to the question.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Actually.
Let's get to it.
Yeah.
Financing. So he has to limit. Um, the reason that he configured it that way is because he needs every square foot possible to lend. Or to borrow against, or the new lender.
Okay.
That's just the bottom line.
That makes sense, it does make sense, yeah. So he, yeah, that's, I knew he would have a good one, and he's gonna have a good.
Simple one, yeah.
No, 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 it's, it's not that I don't believe him, I just think it's a.
Usually banks don't want a lot of things, but, you know.
Sounds. Okay. So, um, we have to do. You want? All right, so Jamie's the only one to see her.
Of course. Yes, I'm pointing up all my hands, so they're waving away here.
I know.
I know, I should go, that's embarrassing.
You wanna try?
No.
I'm good enough, I already.
Are you kidding? I, we started to say the one reason, but I started to think I'm gonna forget, not what that is.
I know it is.
Okay. You can do it when you're done, under.
You wanna borrow mine?
I just, yeah, oh, there we go.
I got to read the questions, I think I'm allowed to answer.
And then I gotta put on my glasses, okay. Um, so we're going to, um, answer these other questions, uh, no or small impact or minor to large impact, and the first question is, will the post-action create a material conflict or?
I'm sorry, okay, I don't need to interrupt, I'm sorry, are we doing this for the two lot subdivision, or the lot line adjustment, or both, or?
So. So it's, it's the subdivision is the subdivision, right, and, um.
Is letting it all segmentation, we're not allowed to do that?
What, well, what's the?
We're just letting them be called segmentation, you're not supposed to do. We're just letting them be called segmentation, you're not supposed to do.
It's for the whole, it's for the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole subdivision.
Is that applied at the S two?
Yes.
And segmentation, no?
Well, there's no segmentation here. I always think of it as a straw mark.
No, there's a lot of segmentation.
I just wanna make sure. I, I understand what Don was saying, but we're good. So, this subdivision.
Okay.
The action is the subdivision, right? Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No. Will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
No, we're not changing it at all, right? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Uh, will the proposed action impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by people walkway?
No.
No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy that fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the proposed action impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic or archaeological architecture or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or cleaning?
No.
All of the, uh, questions being answered, no or small impact, the chair may entertain a negative secret declaration for the project.
I'll second it. Okay. Motion made by Arnie, seconded by Erin, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for a negative secret declaration. So, we can move on to the public hearing. Lisa, were you able to post the public hearing notice for this one? Yeah. Okay, would anyone like to hear the reading or I'll take a motion to wait?
Make a motion to wait the reading of the service.
Okay, motion made by Rich, seconded by Don, to wait the public hearing reading, all in favor. Hi, hi. Any opposed? Motion carries, the waiting, the reading is waiting. Okay, now I'll take a motion to open the public hearing. A motion made by Don, seconded by Erin, all in favor? Okay, uh, motion carries for the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here present to speak on the public hearing for the two lot subdivision and lot line adjustment for X Quarter Road? And is there anyone online who's, I have nobody online.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, motion made by Rich, seconded by Judy. All in favor? Hi, hi. Any opposed? Motion carries to close the public hearing. Okay, so, if anyone, I don't know if anyone has any other questions or comments for Ed or anything to discuss or otherwise I would take a motion to approve for the two lot subdivision and lot line adjustment. I just have a question. Are they done? Is it done now with us, this whole project? Yeah, well, it was. Right. Okay. Barring any other useful things, we're all set with that. Okay. Are they gonna build next year?
I think so.
I couldn't remember.
Talking about the financing.
I'm just curious.
He's itching to go.
Even long lead times on some of those things, steel and stuff.
Yeah. But I think even with the weather and everything that's going on, I think it's probably best to wait for the spring. I don't get to make those decisions, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the two lot subdivision and lot line adjustment.
Okay, motion made by Rich, seconded by Don. Any opposed, or vote, no, motion made by Rich, seconded by Don, all in favor?
I got it.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for the two lot subdivision and lot line. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
You can stay right there, right?
Expose.
The next one. Okay. Next item on the agenda, the agenda is for Shadi in Jessica Awad. And this is at seventy-one forty-seven East Jethise Street, Fayetteville. Uh, this is on for a third presentation, site plan, accessory use permit and also setting the date for the public hearing. Uh, this is for mental health counseling. Tax map number zero eight five point dash zero six dash zero nine point zero.
Um, Doug, may I, may I hold up on that part? I just wanna make sure that the, the map gets here, gets signed, right? And that when it's all done on the subdivision, that we, that it happened here at the time.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just add that to our, our comments and.
Um, Doug, did you have any comments? And I know that you could send in some comments to Ed and then he commented back as far as like drainage letter, parking table, landscaping table, lighting, do you wanna comment?
Yeah, and, and I spoke, he's working on that, uh, but I don't see how we can schedule a public hearing.
Do we have drawings? Am I missing them? Did you see my email? I never got drawings.
Um.
Um.
I got a survey, but I never got a drawing.
I don't know who got those because they were on and then I took them off.
The comment letter said six sets sent in and I'm like, six? Who gets the six? And then I like. But then I'm like, well, I, yeah, I was confused, so I, I haven't. Sure, you're so disappointed.
So, so, Stan, good to go.
Well, I have drawings, but I just.
I could look quick while we're talking.
Are these drawings we're supposed to be looking at? And I know you're not seeing us.
No, yeah. So, I can provide a little backup with Doug's help. I came into this late in the game.
Right.
It's my understanding she's, or maybe a representative that's been in here a couple times under her path.
Yeah.
Um, but the application, as I understand it, some of the drawings were lacking some information that you guys were repeatedly looking for. So, I did the best I could to put an application package together consistent with what you guys are looking for, site plan grading, drainage, um. All features there that you're looking at, not one of them.
Yeah.
So, so what, so the discussion, the discussion I had with Ed.
Yeah.
Is the comments are minor in nature, um, show the existing lighting, provide a brief table for landscaping, uh, parking table. And then the larger one that we consistently do in this first block, Jethise Street is, um, we're gonna need some kind of a drainage report slash letter from Ed that says, the drainage at this spot before and after was either less than or equal to.
And, and I worked on that stuff. I didn't wanna submit it before I came in tonight to muddy up because I, I didn't want there to be too many pieces in the mix before we meet tonight. So, I know I overlooked those things, but I didn't want to submit them.
Yeah.
Before we get this meeting, so.
So, Doug, you need more than what was on this memo from October twenty eighth?
Yes, yes. We had a subject of conversation. And I'm sure we'll get that.
This is, I read the description. I read the, I read everything you wrote, including the, um, responses and all that kinda stuff. And this is what I pictured, so, um, but, yeah.
Is there a set of drawings that talks about it or shows that the flow of the property? A permanent check dam is proposed. Is there a set of drawings with that?
Yeah, so the one, that big drawing that Erin's looking at.
Do you wanna take a look quick?
I was on the site today and I just missed the five, where even a check dam can go on.
It is a little.
It is.
Yeah, it is like back in the backyard back there.
A statement that there's a stormwater system along Hungley Drive. It just needs to be a pipe under the road that pumps the water on this property.
It doesn't. There's no outlet.
It's probably.
Hard to tell. There's this rocky little slot in place.
We used to do that a lot and this is swamby.
Yeah, there's no grate here. Save your life. At least I had, it's a ton of stones. There's a grate here, there's no grate here.
There is a grate there where your, and it's.
Must be somebody done. Wasn't evident today.
You're, you're talking about the grate on the roadside?
You can grant. It's a grate on.
Yeah, there's a catch basin right there, but there's no outlet.
This one's here, it's certainly here. This one I just.
Is that the only set of drawings we have?
Boy, oh.
I believe those are French drawings.
Yeah, are those the only drawings that you've submitted? Is that set? But we don't have a problem. Okay, so we're not gonna be able to discuss the drawings. None of that, none of that. So, because that's the public hearing. Ed, I'll call you tomorrow later how many more I need. Okay? Does that work?
Yeah, but it will have the updated stuff that we.
Yeah. So, these are.
I did a, uh, many years ago. July Center, similar situation.
Uh, January thirteen.
And there was not, it wasn't, the project has nothing to tie into, nothing.
There isn't.
And it. But an infiltration type, if you were to pull that out and put in some filtering material or whatever, I need some courage to infiltrate there.
Well, so, I mean, if we wanna have that discussion, then we can sort of what my logic was, but.
I don't wanna get ahead of it, no, I'm just, I was so puzzled today about what more I have, so this is tough to see. I'm difficult to imagine that word is.
There's about five different ways you could deal with it and this is a perfectly typical one.
I think the balance point, right? I don't think anybody has any drawings. So, we should wait for Ed.
Yeah.
To get his new submission in.
Yeah.
Current to the deadline.
We can set a date for the public hearing for January thirteenth. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that was my goal tonight was to come in and be able to, I think the big thing is schedule a public hearing.
So, we need plans, we would need everything by January second if you.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, I have that stuff done, but like I said, I didn't wanna submit it before tonight to muddy anything that we were.
Right, that's how we never discuss it.
Have it perceived as.
None of us have really seen it. So, but we can schedule the public hearing, have everything for January second. And the public review it. If you don't think that works deadline, you can have it for the second meeting.
Well, that could be more.
Okay, so, all you're doing in addition to what you've already submitted is a letter of drainage form.
And adding a, there's a parking table, landscaping.
Yeah.
And then I commented back as lighting. I didn't, I didn't do a lighting plan. I had.
The usual stuff, yeah. Doug, is that, I had a question for you.
Yeah, that was okay.
I'm glad that they reached out to you though.
No, they don't have.
It's a great use for the property and they just struggled and I think my opinion is that they just need a design professional to help them through.
I think they just needed to own in what they had.
They didn't have much. They had good intentions. They needed to hire. All right, so.
I was just gonna need.
Well, I need a motion.
Speaker.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, because you did the A F, right? All right, motion made by Rich, seconded by Arnie, for the public hearing for January thirteenth, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, public hearing, January thirteenth.
Can we do secret?
Yeah, we have to do for the public hearing.
One thing that I had to review all your. One thing I read somewhere was that they didn't think lighting would be needed because they wouldn't be having night hours. But just back up, they, it's dark during hours, business hours.
Your take building code will require they have lights over a true doors.
But not, not side light.
So, that's why I'm anticipating.
Well, that's what I was asking.
That's why I ran to speak here at C.
We just talked about it on this previous. But how? Right, the side light.
Side lighting.
Right. But I'm talking like parking lot lighting and side, side lighting, not village lighting. Um, I don't know what the requirements are, but that is something I think can be important. For pedestrian vehicular safety. People don't always feel comfortable.
Well, and I can talk to them. Either we do a wall pack on this, on the north side of that.
If it'll reach.
Garage, right?
Wouldn't take much.
Yeah.
And obviously, you know, our modern parking lot lights, you can get lumps balls, you can get zero, you know, cutoffs.
I just think a full cutoff, building my mid light on the north side of that garage would probably be fine.
Yeah. Okay. All right, easy answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Fishank Bot. And this is, um, for a public hearing, uh, for site plan, this is for lot four B, building seven pines, eighty-one oh four Route ninety-two, Manlis, New York, tax map number one twelve point dash zero two dash two point seven. Do we have someone here on behalf of the applicant? Do we have anyone online?
Do you think we should adjourn?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I, I don't think we can have a public hearing. Are you guys here for the public? Yeah, so.
Well, we can't because we needed to ask some questions and stuff.
Yeah.
And we can.
I have questions. Well, let's, let's, is the public hearing open now?
No.
Let's open it. We do have people here. We'll keep it open.
Sounds, yeah, sounds good. We'll keep it open. Okay. Um, do we gonna need to do a secret? Are you gonna wait for that or are you gonna do it first?
I'm gonna wait.
Waiting on secret? Okay, okay, fair enough. Um, Lisa, did you publish a notice?
I did.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to wait for the reading of the motion.
Okay. Made by Rich, by Judy, all in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries to wait the reading. I will now have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Sir.
Okay, motion made by Erin, seconded by. All in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Sorry, I'm waiting a little bit later. All right, motion.
Yes, Emma.
Yeah, no, I know, it's just slightly delayed, so that's why I'm hesitating a second for you. Um, all right, so the public hearing is open, so, does anyone here that would like to speak on seven pines lot four B?
Yes, please, thank you. My name is Trevor Edgen. I work, I live at the four, six, seven, four West Stone Road. I'm the house directly behind the buildings being proposed and changed views. Um, I spoke in front of the board a couple of times now. Certainly been in front of the town board, dragged on for a couple of years. Seems like that's by five thousand bucks. Previous resolution, if I understood it, was that the, the town board and the planning board had agreed to rezone three of the four properties to allow for some residential, um, and some professional office. One point of clarification I wanted to make at a, at a previous meeting, I had heard, um, a member of the board, may or may not speak here, mentioned that these, the belief was these buildings were, were once part of Manlis Military Catapult, which my home was, which was built in nineteen hundred. These were not. These were built in the mid eighties. They were purpose-built as office buildings. My neighbors, um, none of them are here tonight, here on the list of half, um, but my neighbors, um, most of them, I should say, three of them had lived there for over forty years, proposed that and they went so far as they told me, um, to file an R seventy-eight to oppose the building of both buildings to be dealt with. Ultimately, what ended up happening in the past, and I think this board knows that, and I don't wanna waste any time tonight, was the three or four buildings were approved because they were a C A designation and the town board, at the time, not necessarily, but they believed that just changing from C A to the newly established R N, which had also just been changed, um, conveniently, allowed a lesser intense use, um, from what they see, if C A could potentially use. Um, that was wrong at the time because parcels are individually so small, right? Each one of those is a separate tax lot. And it's interesting because sometimes we have conversations where we treat this as the seven pines business park, as one establishment with one, which is what it has, and then sometimes we talk about it as four individual parcels. Um, if the, the parking calculations that are available online, I probably didn't have the benefit of presentation at all. Um, what's online and available is really, is really lacking, um, but I don't, I don't understand, um, when you take an R N property, right, that has the access to the entire, right? So, R N has, is the most restrictive designation and you're calling that more restricted designated access to be used for the purpose of more intense business uses. Now, that's probably already passed because they've already been rezoned. Now, that's probably already passed because they've already been rezoned, it was in front of this board, and I think the comment was made back at the time that they already have, um, an approved site plan, right? But I don't know if that's necessarily true, we have an approved site plan for a professional business park that is integrated, right? There's, my, my problem today, um, remains the trash, and I had met with the applicants privately a couple of times, right? There's a, an agreement to put a, a fence along the, the rear property line, I guess it's the, it's the west side. Um, spanning all four properties. Some of my neighbors have been perplexed that there is no fence, that explains to me that they haven't started any construction, so there would be, there would be no fence. I do know that if, you know, if we continue to move forward through this process, um, I know my neighbors would appreciate fence going out first, right? If you can give them a fence permit and then pull the building permits, um, it's just a suggestion, a request. Um, but, but one of my remaining issues is with trash. Um, we can debate whether residential or office, um, is more traffic intense, one way or the other, right? My position is today, those buildings are quiet, um, except for nine to five, so when we're using our residential properties surrounding this property, we don't see anything, um, once they go to residential, there'll be cars in that parking lot, people coming and going, as, as we all do, so it'll be busier. But what I don't think anybody can debate is the dry office use that has habitated all four of these properties. Um, since the mid eighties, when the buildings were built for the very first time, there is one dumpster receptacle in between buildings, uh, two and three.
Two and three.
Two and three.
One's two and one.
Uh, I don't know, I don't want you to remember, I'm numbering them, I'm sorry, from left to right, so one, one is closest, that's, that's one.
This is where the trash is shown.
Okay, so that works, um, so that, then I'd always, if you look back through the history, the numbering of these buildings has changed multiple times, but I'm going as, as I look at floor plans, left to right, so in front of you, right to left, building one had been the closest suburban park. Building, building two had been the next closest to the river, three was the one in the middle, they acquired separately, and building four is what we're talking about today. Otherwise, the numbering.
The one that we need is where the trash is, that's behind that, that's the third one.
Yeah.
I hope they'll get our.
Yeah, so that, that's the only trash receptacle for the entire property. When you switch from dry office to residential, now you're talking about significantly increased trash, you're talking about wet trash, the trash rodents. That particular parcel, right, housing it for all four properties, is really interesting because that one, um, actually violates the rear garden setback, that building does. It's, it's within, I think it's forty feet, uh, rear garden setback required for the new R N designation, and that building is thirty feet out from the property. Um, and then coincidentally, that's the property that houses the dumpster. Um, it gets picked up around nine o'clock on Tuesdays, it shakes, um, my property, like directly.
When they bang the dumpster back down?
Yes.
Which one is yours, because I didn't see your name on here.
Well, that's because they mostly. Uh, I'm, I'm street buying that, I'm.
Dory?
Four, six, seven, four, yes.
We don't have the date.
I, I bought that, I bought the house through Dory's nine hundred.
That's why they write now reformer.
What's that?
That's what the NF means, now reformer.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure.
This one, yeah. Um, so, look, I, what, what happens, right, in, when you, when you have a dumpster, it gets, by business, by the way, it's, um, commercial real estate. When you have a dumpster and you, you start to use it more and more, they don't necessarily put out more dumpsters, they just have it collected more often, right? So a restaurant might have it collected, you know, twice a week or three times a week, or a big residential complex might have it collected daily or twice daily. So they'll just increase the frequency of that. So one of the common things I had with the applicant, and I don't know what they proposed here, I did see online with a few documents that were posted, there, there appears to be a trash enclosure, which is, which is a nice step, right? So it's a positive step, I feel like they're listening and that's great, um, but we had talked about relocating that, that trash enclosure. I think it would be much more appropriate to have it shifted, now I'm gonna go back to my numbering, I apologize, but either.
They're proposing it right here, it's up here.
They're, they're proposing it back into the center, are they moving it?
One of them here.
Yeah, so.
Isn't it right here?
Today, today is, today is that.
They're, they're on site.
Right now.
That, that's what I was saying, right?
Yeah.
Right, so they talk about.
And it's not enclosed. No. It looks like hell.
It's just, yes, so in fact, it gets, well now, so this applicant purchased the property post COVID, they bought an office building post COVID, um, and then their initial argument was, when I went to the town board, they said, well, we need to change it to residential because the office market is dried up and we're losing our money. The truth was, they'd already purchased the property and they bought it at discount because the office market had dried up. They've now come back, what the, the argument was there, the argument they made, town board, for now moving forward with the three, without the fourth one, was that they couldn't get financing, um, but they've made a, a, a really poor effort to relit any of the buildings as office. They have three buildings that could be residential that they could move forward with, with some remaining office tenants in there. Some of those office tenants had actually expressed, um, concerns to the town board that the applicant wouldn't talk to them about renewing them, right? So they could have taken the office tenants from the residential building and moved them into the approved office building. Move it, they didn't want to do that because of the expense involved, um, which is not, certainly not the residence problem, right? I'm, I'm gonna say, what I've said the entire time, I, I'm not against this, these folks making money, again, my, my business is, um, commercial real estate. It's just, it's, it's where I raise my children, if I don't have to see it, smell it, or hear it, I'm happy to have them be tremendously successful in, in doing something, um, that's, whether it's good for the town or not, it's a town, but, but hopefully it's, it's good for them, that's. Don't want it to come in my expense or my family's expense. Um, I, the, the trash enclosure, I hadn't seen this until now, I'm glad they're moving, they told me they would, um, I'd actually hope they would move it up, um, maybe back up against, you know, the, the piece of the property that's, um, a less suburban park between those two buildings, and what they had talked about.
I think they were, I remember the town board meeting where the dumpster was discussed.
Yeah.
And I think part of it is, you know, if they move it, we're here for a building. We're here about the site plan for this building.
Right.
Um, so, I don't know if we're talking like up here, because these are, these residents have to go all the way as far as they get access.
That's a question, so.
They, they, they had talked, so when, when I had actually met with the developer separately, with a couple of my neighbors, they'd actually said, well, you know, maybe we'll just put it up, up here, or in the grass up here.
They maybe need a couple of.
I don't know if they own it all, but, I mean, what, i- ideally, they'd go to, they'd go to Rover Dids, so they wouldn't have to deal with the dumpster, the dumpster banging, and it wouldn't sit outside, um, attracting rodents for, you know, upwards of a week.
They are really loud when they bang them on the truck, they're loud, I mean, they're, they're loud when they bang on the.
Yeah, twenty, twenty seconds.
Is this, I don't have any experience with how many dumpsters and how you locate them for units and how.
Other companies would, companies would do that.
Well, well.
But, no, no, but for us to say, is this enough of a dumpster?
Right.
Serve all these hills, right?
Yeah.
How do people get building three, four, and their trash to a dumpster that's?
They drive it.
Two hundred feet.
Right, that's what people do, they put it on the front of their car, and they drive it up to the dumpster when they leave to go somewhere.
So I'm obviously not on the side of the applicant here, but, but they're gonna tell you, and if they went to pressure, they could tell you, it's, it's adequate, because I'm telling them what they'll do is they'll just.
I do, right.
Increase the frequency pickup, um, you know, whether they're concerned about the, the resident living here, how they get it to the dumpster, I, I, I just.
That's interesting, I didn't know.
But, but, but what is, what is really odd here, when they talk about the parking calculations and whether they meet or don't meet, some of the parking spaces are split between properties, so neither property should get a parking space credit. Um, is it a, a one single development, or is it four separate individual developments, which each should meet their own parking, uh, code and requirement? I, I don't know, should each have its own trash receptacle, I, I don't know, but.
Well, that's where I came up, the trash question was, how are we looking at this? Because as far as I can remember and have been hearing, it's a mess. Like, who owns what, what amenities serve what building? We ask for an outer space, there's, they put one here, they put one here, there's not one here, there's not one here. I found what I think might be some miscalculations in these parking counts, but I wanted to ask because, yeah, I don't want to assume I have a map from a parking agreement.
It's all one owner.
Thing is just kind of a.
It's all one owner now, but we haven't seen anybody do this yet.
See, what you cite, that is one owner now, what we have to take into consideration, I think, is that they can sell, these are separate real estate parcels, they can sell at any time, which then starts to make parking and dumpsters and everything else, accessways, a real mess.
Yes, Doug, do you remember who their attorney is?
Uh, Jim Messenger.
And you?
Yes.
He was gonna, uh, contacting.
Yeah, he was gonna contact you, Jamie.
About easements or.
Yeah.
Cross easements.
Is it not a, I mean, did you want to bet, so I'd be getting confused, so we have a ton of easements as well, I think, so I'm gonna get the.
This, this is, this is one, I don't think you've seen anything.
Anything here.
Jim was supposed to be reaching out to you.
So, while you guys are thinking about that, I'm hoping that the applicant will watch the, um, replay tonight, and so I'd like to throw a couple of questions out there that I would have otherwise asked them, so that they may be interested in that. One would be to, please double check the math on these parking counts for bedroom counts, because I'm coming up.
It's not different on your desk when you do that.
Um, was, one of the emails we received from the neighbors talked about, um, waiting to see how the other buildings shook out as far as how they were taking care of them and how the, you know, noise and sound and smart, noise, smell, all those things. responsiveness of the owner came out before this one was talked about, and I wasn't here, so was there, I know it's gone back and forth between the boards too, was there a timeframe agreed upon for waiting to develop that last parcel?
No, it wasn't, so the, the, I'll say, the group, the community, right, our, everybody in West Stone Road above the river. Um, you know, we, we came out in a larger group when the entire property was trying to be rezoned from two, three C A parcels into one R N parcel, and they wanted, sorry, they want R A, and they wanted to turn all of them to R N, and the compromise essentially was three conversions to R N, they would leave one R A, and they would put up a fence.
And that's the three, four that was left as R N, yeah.
And then, I'm, I'm gonna guess it was, was probably eight or, or nine months, and I don't know if it was by design or not, but obviously the period was six months, so it had expired. And a couple of months later, they came back and went in front of the board and they said, hey, we need to rezone the, the remaining parcel specifically because we can't get financing. Um, so that was their, that was their reason, and the town board saw it, um, appropriate to, to move this far.
Then it came before us.
We, and, and we, we talked about, so, so while they changed it to R N, they agreed, um, to de-restrict the building, so they could only, because they, R N allows for a host of things, whether it's for special use or, or otherwise, it can be much more intense things. Um, they agreed to restrict it, the, the four buildings in front of tonight, to just residential or professional office, right? So that was another compromise, and then they would come here and they would, they were supposed to work with us about, um, relocating the trash and solving, I mean, there's some other things. Um, that's all that I talked about, I'm just being honest with everybody, and if, if they do that, I can't speak for everybody, right? I'm, because I presume we'll send out another, um, um, note of public hearing, but, but all our neighbors come and speak for themselves. You know, I, I, I'd like to see progress, they've obviously done nothing to the property, I don't think they're attempting to lease it as office, and they're just waiting for this, you know, to come through. Um, and that's, you know, frankly, up to them, but I'd rather it be something than, than nothing, um, but I would, you know, to truly address the, the trash, uh, I know that my neighbors would like to spice off as well, like to fence go up before the construction starts, it's possible, um, I don't, given the layout, I don't think it's all that overly arduous. Um, and then, the, the, the idea that it has this approved site plan, I think, um, and that, and speaking of this board, I think that that's really the wrong way to look at that, you're gonna put a lot of bodies on this property, um, there's a lot of, oh, it's, it's, it's mostly, uh, two bedrooms, but there's gonna be, it's gonna become a, a much more active site, and just to look back at some office site plan from the east, I don't think it's appropriate. Um, I do know that at least one of the, one of the parking lot lights was removed to make way for a handicap sign, um, about, you know, probably four or five, it wasn't this owner, the previous owner would have done that, I'm not sure why, um, but, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to have people here to update the parking lot lighting and make it dark sky and blind for the neighbors. Appreciate that, I don't know if that's our color or not.
Well, we also, yeah, and, and Erin, I had talked to Ryan then, to ask for an accurate parking label.
Okay.
Um, because I almost feel like the lot that we're looking at, lot four, um, three, building three four, or lot four B. Maybe, maybe I have some extra parking that they may not need.
I have.
And it's up eighteen, and I'm thinking, um, you know, so I, I talked to him about that, that's why I want an accurate parking hit, because we may want to consider parking spaces that are closer to the neighbors than they would say. Get rid of.
Well, so removing a parking space.
Yeah.
Removing a few parking spaces isn't going to significantly improve or decrease the impacts that are being discussed. Because, well, those sounds will travel through twenty foot of air the same, whether there's a car parked there or not, right? The benefit you can see would be reduced runoff.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also thinking like the four spaces that are.
That's not gonna change their concerns a whole heck of a lot.
But.
Just being honest, I'll tell you that runoff for the neighbors isn't a significant concern, because it's.
Cause there's a drainage that, yeah, I can understand.
We're, they're well, they're well above it.
Yeah, so, the other thing that, talking about parking, and thinking about the trash, I mean, I remember asking about the trash.
I think it affects like where the trash is relocated.
Well, the trucks have to be able to get to it and all that, but should these be, if they're truly being considered individual parcels, then each one needs to have its own trash. That being said, if they decided to have some kind of an agreement where they all use one trash thing somewhere down the road, and you're, they would, if they needed to add another trash area, they would come in and take out two parking spaces to put a dumpster in. And so that would then impact the parking count, and if they didn't do that, then they'd have to put an extension on to a pavement to put a dumpster in, and that could possibly be a site plan issue. So, I feel like there's bigger things going on here.
There's, there's a lot of things, and I, I don't know how retroactively, for example, let's say they decide to sell one of these buildings. Is it possible for the planning board, the town board to get involved and say, hey, in order for you to sell that building, you gotta add five parking spaces, and you have to have your own dumpster?
Well, how, how could we possibly do that?
That's what I'm asking.
To, to.
Jamie for.
So, Rich.
Yeah, we, I mean, it's a site plan. But are we doing site plans for each parcel? Because if we are, then they're not needing.
Rich, there, there is an argument, like, that, that's, that's really the center.
Yeah.
Used to be separately, you know?
Assumption that they.
So there's, there's a, there's a certain degree of disagreement amongst them, there's also the, the dentist that's in front of building four.
This one, yeah.
He owns a piece of grass on the other side of the main entry drive.
He owns that small, big part.
Okay, so there's, there's some arguments, I mean, you still.
There's, there's tons of issues with this whole arrangement, and I don't know, I, I'll go back and ask the question. If building, pick a building, doesn't matter which one, if they have inadequate parking on their own, and somebody, the, the individual wants to sell it, is it possible for us to get involved and say, timeout before you sell that building, you gotta add five spaces and a dumpster?
No, whatever we, whatever we do now, we would have to put in a covenant and then restriction and cross easements.
But see, I know we talked, we've talked about easements forever, um, and I think you've reviewed the easements and the ingress meter, yeah, I think you.
Yeah.
Pointed out, but I'm just, how do we, we've always kind of looked at this thing as one development, and it could potentially be that one to go.
The only way to deal with it is the cross easements, because whoever buys it is going to be subject to and together with whatever easements are involved. So, if right now we're on this last building, and we're like, this does not need appropriate criteria, we're not gonna give you a site plan approval for your use you're looking for unless you do X, and right now we, we're pretty sure he owns it all, so he's gonna, so we're gonna say, well, we got to have a cross parking easement, or whatever we would decide as a board, so this is the only, this is the time, because by the way, if he were already to have sold off these and he comes in on that, we didn't have a problem.
See, we had this discussion before, when we were looking at the entire project.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if we did it properly or not, but there could be, I can see it happening, where's one of the buildings, two of the buildings, or it's sold up, and we have no control.
But let's say this building gets sold up.
Yeah.
And, and can this person say, you can't use this dumpster?
Right.
But we're, but they're at site plan right now, we're at site plan, we're gonna say, it's a condition. What, a fine easement, you can't stop me from using that.
Well, the way it's set up, every building should have an easement to be able to use the garbage.
Is this the only garbage? Is this the only garbage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the problem.
Yes.
And then it becomes, how much? You know, you know, you have X, that you have the right to put your trash in here. Well, how much? Like, it gets a lot at home. It's
I believe that may have been a condition of the, uh, zone change.
Yeah, it was.
Well, I got, well, I got a suggestion. I, I have a suggestion. Since the, uh, the applicant did not show up to a public hearing and since the public hearing was conducted and we have received some real concerns from people in the neighborhood. We said, I, we said, I suggest that what we tell the applicant, that he has to come back for a review of what, the permit that we actually gave him before we have even another public hearing and clarify the issues with them. Is it going to be four parcels, one parcel, and how are they gonna be handling this?
It's four parcels.
There's four parcels.
Yeah, we talked about this a little bit the last time.
Well, before, are, are you all set?
Yes. So let me just add a couple things. One, the, the strange thing was that a lot of these buildings were rezoned into non-conformity. Like, that's when the really weird stuff happened, right? Like, not, you got, you got a structure there and it doesn't meet the setback requirements. It doesn't have to. You don't have to go to the ZBA because you've just rezoned it into non-conformity. So to Rich's point, if you just sell one of these things, kind of selling it into pre-existing non-conformity, right? It's, it's, it's super strange. The editorial. So for me personally, I would ask that you do not allow these to be reverse subdivided. I'll be back here, right? Because once you do that, the interesting thing that I, the argument that I made to the town board a really long time ago was to leave them CA. Because under the CA designation, the parking requirements for those sized buildings due to the topography here, they could have never been any of those things they were scared of. The town board failed to see that if you couldn't be a drive-through, McDonald's doesn't fit because each one of those parcels, usable square footage, was so far below any national requirement.
They were talking about.
The middle part is still, still some C A. And there was a conversation about just rezoning it out and the guy who wasn't even an applicant, she can't do it. Except they weren't gonna do that, which is nice, but, no, but if you, if you allow them to be reverse subdivided, they become bigger and they could actually, under, even our, under RM, could be something far more intense than I think that we can control it, uh, which I'd ask you not to do. And then also, you know, I'm here complaining about the trash. I, I really would obviously prefer not to see additional trash or something.
I know. I was thinking that. And I was saying it. I mean, you're gonna have four dumpsters banging instead of one.
If, if there's a way for them to go to, you know, to cans, individual cans, right, for rolling off the road like, like all of us do on West Stone Road, you know, that's obviously the best case scenario. I don't know if that's practical.
But that would be an insane amount of cans, wouldn't it?
It would be, yeah. It's not practical.
Oh, so we can
No, but, but ideally, but that would be, right. But everybody would be responsible for their own. I don't know if they get to drive it much.
See, the problem, the problem with that, in my mind, is where are they gonna store their cans?
Yeah.
Now you got cans, you know. I see it over across the street from this project, uh, that, is that called over there? Where the military academy used to be.
Urban.
Yeah, Urban. I mean, those cans are scattered all over because it can't, it's a garage and all, I mean.
Yeah, look, I, I hadn't seen the plan when I got up here to speak and they weren't, they weren't here to present it. It is very similar to what the applicant and I had spoke about. So, you know, I was hopeful there would be even further away, again, potentially on that.
Up here.
Yeah.
That's a long way. It's not really located.
I think they're kind of just have to relocate it, yeah.
Yeah, it's here. I think that that's a reasonable place to put it.
Yeah, away from the, the neighborhood.
The parking counts, the unanswered questions, the lack of being here. There's some weird stuff going on. I'm not comfortable with a lot of it.
I think we need the, we need the applicant. We all agree with the applicant. Is there, are you all set? Okay. Did you want to speak?
I want to prepare to speak, but I
And let us know your name and where you're from.
Uh, William Jones. I was Dr. McGill, who lives in building three, in 108. And we're just concerned about the project. I'm just here to gather facts.
Well, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Well, you can always watch this. Replay is available online.
Okay.
Yeah.
I only have one more comment and
Well, I'm a little bit silly.
It's for the applicant.
I just wanna make sure we Okay. And are you all, you want to, is there anything else you wanted to say?
Um, not really. I'm just concerned about, well, the trash. I mean, there is, the trash is behind us. And people do, they load up their cars and they, they use our dumpster. We've tried putting locks on it and they break them. So, I mean, the general public is using
Wait, you have a, you have a dumpster too?
You're using the dumpster.
We have the one eight, one oh eight, the third, I think it's building three.
Oh, it's building two.
The one, okay, back, it's the one setback.
Oh, I see.
As you're looking, coming into Seven Pines, it's the one in the back.
You're in building
Straight ahead. Okay.
Okay, okay. Got it. So your, the dumpsters are near your building.
Right. And it is locked. And I was just, I guess I wanted a clarification. Is RN residential? So that means RN? And so they're thinking about putting an apartment above our demo practice, which has been there forty years. Granite, who is the management company, that's where their office is. I'm just here to gather facts and then see what this was all about.
Okay.
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 All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
This, this has been difficult, breaking the gig though. Because these aren't even, where do we work COVID? These aren't legal blocks. They have no law for it. And so it's things like that that you've been trying to work through along with R B and cross easements and everything else. I'm not sure. Personally, I don't know where you go from here.
Well, we need the, Doug and I have both spoke with them, so it's, they should have come in here and they, they should
This is like the third
That's all we can say.
Yeah. This is like the third or fourth time they've been on the agenda and no one did it come.
So the LA didn't show up either. The LA didn't come either. AFA didn't come. Right. So I would really like to see seven pines put in the project. There are no more pines. There are not seven pines from what I can tell. And no, I'm serious.
I'm not kind of you?
I think they should have seven pines there. I'm not, I am serious. I think that it's silly. That silly was the fact that there aren't any, not the fact that I was making the comment.
So do we keep the public hearing open until we get that here?
Well, I think, yeah, we, we need to because we need, the public needs a right to have the applicant present and speak and answer questions. So I think we have to keep it open.
So we make a motion to do that?
Do we need a motion to keep it open? We just don't close it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the drawings are not great, honestly.
Oh, no, they're not. We've been through this. We've talked about this over and over now. So if they are listening, they need to get us large drawings that are, that we can read and that are clear and after.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on seven pines?
If no one else has any questions, we're through with seven pines. Go right now.
Okay.
Um, I do not have any other business, but Arnie, you have something to say?
I was hoping Rich would say something and I would second it. Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made to adjourn by Rich, seconded by Arnie, all in favor. Motion to adjourn, we need to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hi.